I'm having some PTSD from being in here last Saturday because my car did so bad in the race. And I'm still working through that. But I just know that I can train over the year and maybe do better next time. So I just want to introduce myself. I'm Terry Carr, the Executive Director of Point Pleasant. And of the Manor still, but the interim piece fell off. And so I'm very excited to have that first part of interim fall off and feel really, really excited about being here. And just in six or seven short weeks, I felt like I've gotten to know a lot of you all better than the first day I walked in here and remembering names as best I can and feeling more and more comfortable as time goes on. So I am very, very excited for that and look forward to moving forward with the permanent role. So with that said, I'd like to open up the meeting with our opening prayer with Dino. Come up, please.
One more person tells me I have a smudge of dirt on my head, you're going to spend five years in purgatory. This is the industrial one, but yes, it is a bit over the top. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we now begin this town hall meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to go closer as residents and nurture the bonds of our Point Pleasant community. In your name we pray. Amen.
No. It's a ceremonial process. We're going to all clap while we delete the interim. I'm now ordained. Sorry, Dino. Okay, so as a group, if we could, just recite the mission statement. I'll lead us off. We serve from the heart and inspire older adults to enjoy happy, healthy, and purposeful lives. So we probably could have done the same with taking off the interim, had the big, I don't know what you would call it, taking it away of the levology that was going to be up there. And so glad to have that not be up there, you know, with that. So everything's good. And just not to recap or not to relive yesterday, because I know you already had that special town hall meeting, but we are one town, one family, and Westminster Point Pleasant, Westminster Manor always were one town, one family. But like I had said maybe six or seven weeks ago, that really was trying to make that a shorter road, figuratively of course, and not literally, you know, with that. And certainly that's where we are currently, you know, with that and having the consolidation of the two. But before I do move on from that, I understand that between Brian, Denise, and Jim, that they did a really good job of explaining that to you all. And certainly I had the honor and opportunity and thankful for the executive council to give up part of their day. And I'm terribly sorry that you missed the Mardi Gras parade that happened for that. But I thought it was very important that we all, you know, meet and met together because I wanted to be able to speak to both Point Pleasant and the Manor in person. And I obviously couldn't have been in two places at one time. So I wanted to thank them. But before I move on to the normal town hall, is there any questions that maybe have come up since the announcement or you just weren't here? Yes?
The sum of the number of people in the health center at Point Pleasant and Westminster Manor must be more than, well, let me rephrase that. I know the contract residents, the contract people will all be covered, but the sum of the people who are in Point Pleasant Health Center now and Westminster must be more than the 120 capacity of Point Pleasant. And some non-contract people will have to find other settings. Is that correct?
Yes, the question and comment is that the sum of Point Pleasant Nursing Center and the Manor is greater than the 120 of the capacity here at Point Pleasant. And so there will be, through those residence, residency agreements that we have, and certainly we just want to honor those and certainly bring the contract residents over to Point Pleasant, so there will be a room for them. And then there are a few other circumstances to where we have married couples that live, one being in the nursing center, one being in independent living, and giving them the opportunity to transition over here as well. And I do know that one independent living person wants to do that and come over here with their spouse with that. So what that, and then there's probably, because remember, the Manor is about, is not about, it is half of this size. And so, and currently there was 40, their occupancy is at 46, and I won't go through every single number, but just for some perspective, there's about 10 contract residents, and then there's about 10 or 11 that are short-term residents that were already regardless of this or not would be going back to their home. And so then that leaves roughly about 23 residents that we're working with to find placement for. So there's right now, there's room for about 15 or 16 residents to come over to Point Pleasant based on the occupancy here now. And so when that all shakes out, we're talking about 15 residents that we, that we're, will be needing to find placement for elsewhere. And we've already been in contact with some local facilities to help with that and make sure that they have a safe place to go and that the families and residents are comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I move on?
I've got a question in reference to the people that are maybe contracted but also end up on Medicare and Medicaid. Are they still being covered or are you kicking them out?
Well, we're helping them transfer to another place. I don't want to say that we're kicking them out, but we're discontinuing our operations. And so we are having to have everybody find new placement, whether it's here or somewhere else that's a safe, comfortable place for them to live. But anybody who has Medicare or Medicaid or hospice services or private funds, doesn't really matter of the payer type, we're just wanting to accommodate as many people as we can, not up to 120. And then once we reach that limit, we will have to help those individuals find placement elsewhere.
Even though they're contracted?
No.
No, no. All, 100% of the contracted individuals will be coming to Point Pleasant. And currently that number as of this morning was at 10.
I just have a question. I know that the memo that came out in our cobbies last night was not created here. It seems to be created in Orlando and signed by Rogers and Hennessy. And I know in the past there's been some problem in communications and maybe Orlando not understanding everything specific to a property. But my questions involve, A, the first sentence of the letter, and B, the first bullet on the backside of the letter. First, after they said, "We are writing you to let you know that after much analysis and iteration, we've made the decision to consolidate the operations of Westminster Manor and Point Pleasant into one community." They don't say, "Other than the health center, how will this affect other aspects of services of independent living?" And the other thing on the backside bullet, "In the future Westminster contract independent, in the future Westminster Manor, contract independent living assisted living residents will have priority for any future nursing stays at Westminster Point Pleasant." They don't say priority over whom. And then they say, "We already offer this arrangements for the Westminster Shores residents." Now, somebody said, and of course, my first thing was, "What of the Courtyard and the Towers in their contracts?" But somebody said, "Oh, there's another facility named the Shores," or something like that. But the thing is, I don't know whether, since communications has been such a difficult things at times, if they could just have someone not only to proofread for spelling and grammar, but also accuracy and appropriateness to the facility they're sending the memo to? Is that possible? Am I assuming correctly that, you know, Shores, they're not saying the Shores building, since the Shores sometimes is separated from the residences, they have a trust fund and we don't? But, you know, I just wanted to make sure that what most people read at first blush is not exclusion of the Towers and the Courtyard.
So I think I soaked all that in, that I can respond without having to ask for you to repeat anything. And so I do apologize. The letter was generated through Orlando and signed by Terry Rogers, the CEO, and Gary, the COO. And on the back page, it makes a reference to the Shores. And that is just an oversight, and certainly we will do a better job of proofreading those. That, it should have said Point Pleasant, and I think it was just an oversight. We do have the Shores up in St. Pete, or yes, up in St. Pete, and that just maybe was a template that we had used and just an oversight on that. And so it's just the irony of a coincidence, or I should say, of the Shores building here, but that's not referencing the Shores building.
I just wanted to clarify.
It's a great, it's a great point, and I'm glad you said that so I could speak to it. And then on the front end of what you were asking, when it was saying that the independent living and the assisted living residents would have priority to placement in the nursing center, that is standard and that has always been in place and is in place here currently. So if one of you all go to the hospital, have a need, have a procedure, and you would need to have placement in the nursing center here temporarily, you have priority over the community, over the non-contract individuals. And so if we had two referrals, one from somebody just that lived in the community, and I don't mean Point Pleasant community, I mean the city for that, then you would have priority over that individual in the hospital, you know, to come in here. So it's just really blending that in with the Manor folks and letting them know that hasn't changed. So if you have that need at the Manor, you would then have the priority over the city or the community for placement, you know, here. And it kind of goes that way with currently, like with memory care, because the Manor doesn't have memory care. And we have sent residents over here for those services and because the Manor doesn't have memory care.
Gotcha. And the first line saying that we've made the decision to consolidate into one campus out of two, are there other, at this point, and of course, things can change at any moment, and I know that they're completing the consolidation at the 90 days or the end of May, are there any other aspects of services that we experienced that will be consolidated or further reduced from what we, the reduction that we experienced in the past year for two?
So the question is, in addition to the nursing center at the Manor being discontinued, are there be any other services that will be reduced or consolidated that would have an impact to this population and that there is not? And I appreciate the disclaimer, or the disclaimer that things could change, you know, with that. And so, but as of now in the foreseeable future, there is not any plans, you know, for that. Just the nursing center of the Manor.
It looks like, it looks like the nursing center is going to be pretty full, and I understand that we have first priority, but what if it's full? Then what?
So the question is, and it's a great question, it appears, which it's not going to appear, it's going to happen, is that the nursing center is going to be full. But that's not going to be permanently. So what happens with the priority status if the nursing center is full? Which that could happen even if we weren't doing the consolidation. And sometimes it's happened at the Manor, to where we have been 58 or 59 there and not able to accommodate that. So what we had done at the time was to reach out first here to Point Pleasant. Obviously, we can't do that now. And but we have also then utilized some of our sister properties in St. Pete to do that for a short term until we have a bed available. Or someone might say, "I don't want to make a double transition, so I'll just go to Suncoast and have my rehab there and I'll come back to my apartment." Or I'll come the minute that a bed is available. So we would do that. And if for some reason, somebody would say, "For logistical reasons, for family travel, for whatever the reason, St. Pete is too far, I don't want to be there, and there's no bed here at Point Pleasant, I want to go to XYZ facility here in Bradenton," we would coordinate with them and then transition you back. That's not happened in my time here, but I'm just throwing it out there that will always help find placement for somebody. Just the very ending point, to your point, right now, there is about 35 short-term residents in Point Pleasant rehab, which means they're not contracted, they're from the community, they've come in for rehab, and then they're going to go back to their personal homes. So there's a constant turnover with that. And so the likelihood of there not being a bed available, if you needed that or when you need that, is very small, because there's constantly individuals that have gotten their short-term rehab and then they go back home. If that, does that make sense? Okay. And certainly if there's any other questions that come up individually, feel free to see me in person or email or anything. I'll be certainly glad to talk as transparent as always. Okay, COVID is still happening, but it's really tailing off, at least in the Point Pleasant area, and really even at the Manor too. So we had a rough January where we had 12 residents in IL, but we have not had, and this month is less than a week away from being completed, and we haven't had any IL cases except for one that happened today. So that was post-line. So independent living, and then we haven't had any team members. And then assisted living has had four cases in January with residents, and then two cases that came up last week that probably are resolved. Yes. So those two that happened in February have served their sentence of quarantine and are no longer contagious and are back to work. And then we don't have the exact breakdown of the months for the nursing center, but there's been eight residents in the nursing center and seven team members, so a total of 15 people in the nursing center with COVID. Most of all of that, or all of that has resolved. There's no current cases in the nursing center, but most of all of that happened in January. There might have been a few cases in February. So all in all, other than the one case that came up in independent living that was identified today, it's isolated, and it was somebody that was away from the property and got contracted for the positive case outside of here, so they did not get it here. And then they are safely quarantining and they have mild cold symptoms. But our county prevalence rate is down to 10.6. I'd love to see it below 10%. That's normally where it's been, where it's been very calm, but it was as high as 16% recently. Last week, it was 15.2%. And so it's come down over 5% in a week's time. So that's really positive news. Just a reminder to follow precautions and remain in your apartment if you have even the minor symptoms and consider being tested. All right, so financial priorities and outcomes. So if you remember, last month, we talked about, and Brian does a great job of tracking this, and certainly it looks like you've added some nursing data, so thank you very much. So we talked about last month, and I don't remember the exact numbers I gave, but I painted that picture of how much we've spent in temporary staffing and how that, if we continue that and if we annualize that, how high that number would be. And that was the number one area of the biggest area to reduce expenses, not to minimize any other areas to cut costs or to be very efficient with. But here, we have made a great trend. If you look back, the numbers on the top as a reminder are just our pay periods. So there's 52 weeks in a year. We get paid every other week. So for example, when you see 26, that would be the end of the calendar year, and then one would be once the first pay period in January. So as we hit the new year, we got our agency percentage, the ultimate goal is 0%, but the company standard is at 5%, which is a very, very aggressive standard. And a lot of us were up in the 19, 20, 25% range with that. And so you can see assisted living has had a great trend, and now currently through the first four payrolls or first couple of months here in this year, we are at zero agency. So that, it's great for cost cutting or cost saving, or being efficient with managing our expenses, but more importantly, it's better for quality. Quality of care is really the name of the game there. And with our nursing center, we've done a really good job of bringing that down into January. We're at 5.8% and in December at 11% and November 16. So that trend is a very favorable trend for us that we're coming down, you know, a lot. So that's helping us meet our targets, because if we have a high temporary staffing utilization but have a very strong occupancy month, all of the gains that we're making from our strong revenue gets absorbed a lot with this agency cost. So to see that coming down is a really good trend. So from an occupancy standpoint, the very top row is the independent living, and so our capacity is 242 units, and we're targeted to have 218 units full. And right now, we're at 212, which is 87.6%. And it's a plus one since last month, but we're really driving up that as well and feel like we could probably in the next couple of months be in the 217 to 220 range with the sales or the deposit that Leslie's gotten. And so it's been a great first few months here of this calendar year, and a lot of residents have had a big part of that, whether it's talking with individuals on our behalf or meeting tours that come through. But it's been very much noticed and very much appreciated, at least in my two months, not to say it hasn't always been that way, but what I've seen is the involvement from the resident population here helping with that. So thank you for that, but we are making a lot of progress. And if we can get to that 218, 220 mark, then we'll be at our benchmark, and then we certainly want to go up from that. Assisted living has stayed relatively full. 54 is our capacity, our actual is at 52, and we're targeted for 47. So we're up one from last month and at 93% occupied in assisted living, and it appears that we probably will potentially be full soon?
Maybe by the end of the month.
Okay, so that was on camera and on microphone that Brian committed to being full.
One of the months.
One of the months we'll be full. Thank you, Brian. The nursing center has done really well. 120 capacity, which we've talked about, we're targeted for 97. Our actual is 104, and we've had a good trend of, because we were in the 90s for some months at the end of the year and before that, and now we've been in that 103 to 108 range for us. And we're really trying to monitor that right now, because we don't want to stop growing our senses here, but then we have to be sensitive to them, making sure we accommodate the folks that we can at the Manor as well. So it's a balancing act there, but they're up too. So we've had a good, green is good, red is not so good, as far as just what our target is. And so we've had a 1.3% growth from last month. And just as we would continue to grow, if we could grow by 1.3% every month, we would be well on our way to getting into the mid 90s. All right, now the fun stuff. So I had made a bold prediction last month that I felt like January was going really well and that we were trending the right way and that it would be a really good month. And so from a revenue standpoint, in January, we had $2,302,165, and then that was ahead of our target of almost $287,000. So it was a very strong month from a revenue standpoint. But what's equally, if not more important, is that our expenses were $1,999,108, and we were targeted to spend $2,7,824. So we met that target. And so then when you take the top line minus the middle line, that was our net operating income of $303,000 last month, which gives us, there's our priorities, that we had said last month that we wanted to have our priorities just to focus on our expenses. Part of our expenses were helping reduce that agency was our number one priority, and that would really help us get us to where we wanted to get. But this is really what I want to show. So remember, red is bad or under budget, and green is great. And so in August, looking sideways, I think that says minus $49,000, and then in September, minus $87,000, October, minus $122,000. So we're going the wrong way. So not only is it red, but it keeps getting higher and higher. And so then in November, we had a big rally and had a positive margin of $62,000. And then in December, it was $76,000. And just based on how we were performing with our occupancy and knowing what was going on and knowing how well everyone was doing with their expense control, I felt easily predicted that January would be even better than December, and it was $303,000. So that was a huge turnaround, which then turned our negative year-to-date margin from a negative of about $148,000 to a positive, well, I think it was $146,000, but whatever that math is, we doubled, pretty much erased the deficit of the negative that we had over nine months combined to a positive of now, for the year, we're at a plus $148,000. So not that it completely matters, and I am a little bit ultra-competitive, but it was the highest margin in the company for all 10 properties. So it was. So everybody has done a great job, well before me arriving here, turning that around and working on everything they can work on. And now we're starting to see fruits of the labor that happened again well before I got And that would lead me to Jerome.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a little shorter than Terry, so I can be closer to the oven. I just have a couple of quick updates. One, just want to remind everyone, as it's getting close to the end of the month, the meal exchange program is available. Please feel free to take advantage of that. You can fill the forms out. Pickup days are on Fridays and Tuesdays. So just don't wait till the last day of the month, because there's no promise that we can get those charges in. We'll try our best, though. Cameron and I usually check the boxes 5:00 PM every day. So that means if you were to put your meal exchange form in after that on Tuesday, which is the last day of the month, then it's likely we're not going to be able to take those meal credits for this month. And I know this month is a short month, so a lot of residents want to be able to use them for eggs. Eggs seems to be the top seller right now, so happy that we can provide that service. Also, a reminder or kind of an update, it is getting time for us to update our menu. So I put it in the dark side and then be on the lookout for information for our new menu tasting party, a special dining chat to talk about the new seasonal menu, because it's set to be changing in April. So that means towards the end of next month, we'll be meeting and talking about it and having some events for you to taste those new recipes and things like that. So we're looking forward to that. We do have plates on the patio that is scheduled for next Tuesday, another way for you to use up your unused meals. There will be a two-meal credit event, and it'll be on the patio right here outside the Open Heart. The menu will be on MyWLife tonight, and then we'll be live taking reservations for that. For those of you who don't know, Plates on the Patio is kind of like a lunch version of Inlet. Inlet is a little more fancy. We put Leonard on the tables. The menu's a little elevated. And Plates on the Patio is a lunch event outside, alfresco dining on the patio, where we do something that you might get at a bistro or something you might get downtown at Old Brick's up here, 22. So it's usually some sort of a handheld option, a little more trendy. So we look forward to having fun with that, and hopefully you all enjoy the menu we create for that. Also, the dining event calendar will be posted on Tuesday on MyWLife for those of you who are using that to keep track of all the events that we're doing. We hope that you all are enjoying some of the themed meals and food holidays that we're celebrating. I know the margarita pizza on National Pizza Day went over very well, so be on the lookout for that. And the last thing I have is a little reminder for residents who live in the Shores building. There's an open-service coffee machine that's right outside the Open Heart dining room. If you, as a resident, have an issue with the machine or not for sure exactly how to work it or anything, please get a member of, a team member, whether it's a dining team member, if you ask the receptionist, sue, whoever the case may be. We have a resident that somehow has been turning it off. And then residents in the morning are coming to get coffee, and they're just pressing all the buttons, trying to figure out why the coffee machine isn't working. Well, that's because somebody has turned it off, which also only takes a button. So the best thing to do is not press any buttons except for the one that says hot water, decaf, or regular coffee. But if you ever need anything, cups, if the coffee's not working because it's out, because it is an automatic machine and we do have to refill it, please be patient, get a member of Dining Services, we'll be happy to help you. We really don't have anybody in the front of the house team here until about 10:00 AM. However, the cook, if she's back there or he's back there, will be more than happy to help if possible. Okay? But sometimes you might just have to be patient, because we can't always forecast when it's going to run out. So just don't open it up or don't go pressing buttons and things like that, because you could mess it up for everybody. Anybody have any questions for me? Anything? All right, well, I look forward to seeing everybody at the dining chats next month, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I also have some updates. The chiller here over at the Shores that we're still on for the parts and everything to be here next week. It'll take about a week for them to install and we should be back running again with our chiller here. And the big temporary that's sitting in the middle of the road should be gone. Okay? The Shores boilers, those have all been installed. We've adjusted all the temperatures, so everyone should be happy now, be able to get hot water when you want hot water. We haven't had any problems. I haven't got any calls that people aren't getting hot water. So the Shores boilers are completed. They are working over at the Towers now. Good thing about the Towers is they won't be doing all of the water outages and things that we are having over here at the Shores. So more of that's going to be directed towards the kitchen, which I've already worked that with Jerome. They actually have booster heaters, so it really won't bother them so much. The rest of them, we do have two boilers that send the water to the nursing center into independent. So they'll turn one off and you won't feel it. They'll go ahead and change that boiler out, then they'll switch over to that one, take the other one out. So that one there will be quick, easy. We're hoping to have all the boilers in by the end of next week. Courtyard walkway painting, we've gotten all of the lift work done. So now we've got Johnny's out there and he's doing a little bit of painting every day. It's going to take a while to get everything painted and completed over there. We're expecting at least a couple more weeks, but he's spending a few hours every day out there just doing all the little fine touches. The seawall project, I've got a contractor, he was supposed to be here, feels like it keeps falling on me. He was supposed to be here this week to start pushing dirt. We do have a pile of dirt out there in the property just west of the Shores. And he's going to be pushing that dirt down towards the seawall that was just installed. And then we're going to be working with, we'll be working with construction management, don't want to say Orlando, construction management, they are getting us some more dirt brought in and then we'll get that all leveled out there. So the contractor's supposed to be here next week to come and see if he can start pushing some of that in there. Also, the same contractor is going to see if he can pull out the debris that's out there in the water.
About that pile of piling? Are they going to pick that up?
What's that?
The piling sitting out there.
The material that they left behind.
That's, oh, that the contractor left behind? We're still working on where that's going. Over in the nursing center, we're replacing the flooring out there. I don't know if any of you all have visited over there. We've got the old tile floor that has been in there. It was installed back in 2000 when the building was built. We are now changing out and it's going to be a process. I think we had it scheduled for a five-year project. And what they're doing is they're replacing the flooring that's in there in the rooms and they're putting the vinyl plank like we're putting inside the apartments. And if you haven't seen the rooms that have been completed, it is beautiful. It's very, very nice. And finally, the trimming of the palms. I just got off the contractor to find out where we're at with that. They are supposed to be here this week to go ahead and finish it. In fact, I walked the property today to let them know that they didn't finish it. So they will be back to go ahead and finish that up this week. Okay? Any questions for me? You all have a great day.
If I were to put in a work order with the front desk, and it's a horrible series, but how long does it usually take?
So the question is, if someone puts in a work order, how long does it take for it to be completed, correct? And that all depends on the work order and the amount of people that I have that day. So if it's urgent, we try to get urgent work orders taken care of right away. If it's something, I seen one today, someone wants us to build shelves for them. That's going to take longer because I'm trying to get all the urge in and all the big ones out. I've got one person that I'm trying to use as a rover that goes to all the different properties to try to take care of those big things like that. But if he's tied up six hours putting a shelf together, then that's that much less he can't do somewhere else. So it really depends on what it is. And I can get with you and find out what yours is and make sure that it's taken care of.
Are we ever going to be able to be warm in this section? It's great we have a chiller, but we freeze in this, you come around the corner and this, today it doesn't seem so bad, but usually you come around the corner and you sit in the card room, you freeze. You put sweaters on and you're still cold. Why are we making it so cold with the chiller?
Okay, so the question is, is it ever going to be warmer in the town center area over here? It all depends on, like today, we want to freeze this room out because we've got 60 people in here. Now, we don't want it to be warm when everyone comes in and then by the time you leave, it's 85 in here. So, and the other thing that goes along with that is we've got people that mess with the, because they're not necessarily secure. So people can go over there and start raising it or lowering it. We may have you that it's really cold and got another resident comes in and says that they're freezing. And they came in first and jacked up or lowered it and...
It's always cold. You mean I can soy it there and I can turn it up?
It should be, it should be set at 74 degrees. That's what we try to keep the temperature at in all the common areas. Okay, I will check that. And that's also connected, so there's two different AC systems that feed the card room. One comes from the gym and the other one comes from this room. So you're being hit twice. So if they want it cold in the gym because they're in there working up a sweat, you're going to feel that inside there also.
That's not fair. It's cold all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Bill, I just have one thing I'd bring you up because of the consolidation and what that might mean as far as recisions and deferrals of certain maintenance projects that have been on the books, on the list, whatever, for years and keep on getting deferred. One of them, right up there, you had courtyard, the painting of the walkways. Well, that's not the walkways, that's just the sides of the walkways, face the street, right?
Correct.
But in the interim, I want you to stay up front. I have but one nose to give and I've already given it. Are they going to be doing anything about the walkways themselves, the accumulation of the water and the leveling it out and drainage in the near future?
So the question is, are we going to go ahead and do anything about the leveling of the walkways over at the courtyard in the near future?
Drain so it doesn't accumulate and have setting water on the walkways.
And that's something that comes up each year at budget time. And we've been asked to try a different, a couple of different things. One, we did in front of your apartment where we did some cutting into the concrete to try to get it to drain out. We've had several engineers, several contractors come out and nobody really wants to go ahead and touch that because of the pitch. We are not going to ignore it. That's something that we will continue to try to get somebody to help us get that fixed.
It's still puddling, great puddling. They did things further on down by the card room, but they just do anything to put it by my place.
Okay. Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to tell you, I think you have the nicest, most clever, best maintenance guys. They're so good. I have a little dog and he's little, but when he knows that one of them are coming, he starts barking at us like crazy and makes us come in and just say, "It's okay, it's okay." They're really great.
So that one I want to share too. She said we have the nicest, most cleverest bunch of guys. So, thank you.
Okay, let me get us back on visibility here. Uh-oh, I got logged off completely. Wow, you can all head home, I guess. This will just take a minute. We're so secure that you need two devices to log in at any time. So if you ever attempted to want to steal my computer and do some homework for me, you're going to have to have both. So, see if that gets to you. There we go. And you're welcome to do my work anytime you'd like. Just steal a paper, paper's easier. Okay, here we are. So that finished with maintenance and that comes right in time for me. All right. So first I wanted to start with, is there anyone here today that is new to Point Pleasant who moved in since January 1st? Is there anyone here, I don't want to necessarily have anyone feel singled out, but anyone brand new? Okay, so that reminds me of something that Leslie brought up and I'll come back to that. But I wanted to show the names, I probably could have made it a little bigger, of the people who have moved in so far year-to-date. So as Terry was talking about, we wanted to fill all of our open spaces with great residents living here. It certainly helps in every way, including having more life and vitality and people to enjoy being with. So if you know these folks, and hopefully you can see that, but hopefully you've welcomed them. And one of the things I encourage you to do is if they're, they live on your floor, to invite them to come to these meetings and to other things that we have so that they're aware of them. But what's nice is we have yet two more folks moving in here in February and there's already six that we're expecting in March. So this is great activity. And so thank you, I want to thank the Welcome Wagon and the residents who really do such a great job to help our residents feel welcome as they come. And we're very excited about more people coming to our community. The next thing I want to talk about is this, if I were to say Point Pleasant Pirates, what would your response be?
Arrgh!
Very impressive. So on Friday, we are going to have a pretty special event. We're going up to, I can't get out my patch, of course. We're going up to St. Pete and we are going to represent Point Pleasant very well. I'm also competitive, so I will be dressed like a pirate to support my Point Pleasant team and I can't wait to see the great things we're going to do. So please encourage your team, tell them about it. We have, that's the picture about it. Here's some of the people that have been working out feverishly, I can't do that, every day. But if you would come and send us off as we head out to bring home the gold. That'll be Friday morning around 9:30. 9:30, so if you would, is that right out here?
So it's the, it will be the Shores, we'll pick up at the Shores first, then to the Towers, then the courtyard. So between 9:30 and 10 till 10. But we have to leave campus at 10 till 10 because they have a synchronized arrivals of the college.
So I'm very excited about that. And thank you to all who are representing us. And we should be, have a fun time. It's going to be a warm day, but we'll have a good time together. I think the person wearing the pirate costume will be the warmest. But he's still excited about it, especially if his team represents us very well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Barb for the volunteer update.
Think that's going to work? Can you see me over the computer? Okay, hi, everybody. Nice to see your smiling faces. So the volunteer report for the month of January, I had 98 resident volunteers report hours. And out of those 98, they did 1,118 hours on our campus. Let's give a cheer for our volunteers. Awesome volunteers here. And also, in addition to the volunteer hours they did on campus, they did 278 hours off campus. So that might be in local churches, nonprofits, those kinds of things. So we have people that are doing things here and doing things out there in our local community. So this is fantastic. I wanted to tell you about creating legends. We have a new online nomination form. A lot of you, you know, you want to recommend some of those fantastic maintenance guys or somebody does something just legendary for you and you're like, where's that form? How do I turn that in? What do I, you know, where's the form? You could go now on MyWLife, there's actually a module that says creating legends. And you go into that, you click into that and then it's the online nomination form. So if you are computer savvy and you want to do it that way, you fill it in there, you click submit and it goes right to HR. So that's a real easy way to do it if you want to do it that way. We still have the hard copies that you can do as well.
Where are they? I can't find them.
The hard copy should be at the reception desks.
And they're kind of, I think there was some in the mailroom.
Okay. It's a little brochure. It looks like a little brochure. Yeah. You haven't seen it?
I just added a display in assisted living today because I think there are so many people who want to express their appreciation. So we'll look at making sure that most common areas have a little display of them so that they're convenient for you. Even more convenient.
Yeah, great. And then another new program that I have, and this was in response to the Quality of Life survey, is our Volunteer 101 class that I'm doing. And it's basically an overview of the volunteer program. Even if you've been volunteering here for a while, we talk about, I talk about what is considered volunteer hour. You know, the different, we go over a little bit the opportunities, but mostly it's like, how do you report? Who do you get training from? When you start an opportunity? Those kinds of things. So it's going to be the fifth Friday of each quarter at 10 o'clock in the LLC. I started one in February just to get the ball rolling, but we have one in March. And I was going to say the fifth Friday of March is the 30th, but that's the day before my birthday, so I made it the 24th instead. Okay. And then the Blue Dot program. So the Blue Dot program is a new program that we have. We're trying to improve communications, but we're also trying to do our best to be efficient and also to reduce the cost of paper production and all of those things, printing and save a few trees in the process. So we know not everybody is computer savvy or has a computer or a tablet or a smartphone. So what we're going to do is we're going to send out this survey. It's going to be in everyone's cubby and I would greatly appreciate, because if we get everybody's information back, we'll be more efficient. So it basically is going to say, you have to answer yes or no. This is not a hard survey. I have an electronic device and an email where I can receive regularly checked electronic messages from Westminster Point Pleasant. Yes or no? If you say no, then there will be a blue dot on your cubby and that way the staff will know you need paper copies. If you don't have a blue dot, then you are going to be saying, I would like electronic versions. So that's going to be a great thing if we can make this work. That's our hope. We're going to try that, but I'm going to send this out. I'm going to drop this on the 1st of March. So if everybody would just share that with your neighbor to please return this information. If you do have an email that you use regularly, please write it legibly on that line so we can tell what you're, it should be the same thing that's in MyWLife. Most of you have updated your profile, but if it's different, then I may call you, you know, just to make sure we know which one you want in there. And that is the Blue Dot program. And if I said Pirates, what would you say?
Arrgh!
Oh, that's good.
You shouted off the computer.
You did.
Very good. All right. All right. So I believe that brings us to the end of what we have scheduled. I'm going to end with a request, a suggestion. If you would consider, no obligation, but if you know what a Google review is, many times the dissatisfied customer takes time to say, I didn't like the oil changer, I didn't like how that went, and they do a Google review. And unfortunately, in our culture, many times it's someone who's unhappy about something. So what we wanted to ask is, if you are, and we hope you are, but if you are satisfied, if you like living at Point Pleasant, if you'd ever consider going to Google and saying... and saying in your own words, "Why?" What you like about Point Pleasant. It could be how nice they are to the dogs, if you wanted. But it could be anything. And we just, and again, no obligation. If that's not something you know how to do or feel inclined, that's fine. But if you do feel strongly about loving to live here, we would just ask you to consider putting that on a Google review. So ask me if you have any more questions. Now Terry did have to step out, so if you have any other questions or suggestions, I'd be glad to field them if there's anything else on your mind we haven't covered.
Well, what are we going to do on St. Patrick's Day?
What do you want to do on St. Patrick's Day?
Well, it's a good day for the future.
Ah.
You know St. Patrick's.
I do.
It's a whole future of your...
Yes.
So what are we going to do?
Well, we might have some, I'd start by wearing green, dying some sort of a drink green. Whatever that would be. I think they probably have some plans in advance.
I am going to tell you about one.
Okay, Barb?
Because we just decided to do this. St. Patty's Day is green, right? So we're going to have a Go Green Awareness Day that day. And we're going to ask everybody to wear green. We're going to have Go Green stickers you can wear and we're going to ask everybody to bring their own cup to the coffee machine that day. So you'll have, yeah, not going to have green coffee, but we'll do... So that's the aspect from volunteer services, that's what we're doing, okay? I think there's a party also.
Yeah, we'll certainly have a party and it's always food-related and things like that. So here's what I'd suggest. If you have any ideas or suggestions, please let one of us know. If it's food-related, you know who to see. If it's fun-related, you know who to see and we're up for anything. I'll dress like a leprechaun if you need. Certainly I've got a lot of iris in my blood. I don't think I'm allowed to start breakfast with Guinness, but anyway, so at least not here, so. We could, yeah. Yeah, so, okay. Any other questions? Great one, that's a fun question. And I like the challenge because we want to be looking ahead to fun things too. We want to see what's next and what do we look forward to. Anything else? Okay, then we're going to go ahead with the drawing and I'll have Sue come up for that. So pull out your tickets, I guess I'm the one to pick. What surprise did anyone see? Very good. Inlet dining, I think I got one. Inlet dining for two, I'll just read the last three numbers. 1, 3, 3. Hey, there we go, all right. 1, 3, 3. All right, we got some close people. Thank you all so much. Thank you for recording for us, we appreciate that and hope you have a blessed afternoon.